I will, I will call this meeting to order. Uh, it is seven twenty uh five. Um, councilors present, myself, councillor Bordelone and councillor Heed. Um, approval of the minutes. Um. I will. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right. Um, is there any discussion? Um, I do need to speak with Lisa, just looking through.
Clarify, can you just restate like which meetings, which minutes?
A- absolutely. Um, if you bear with me, Portia, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay. No, I'm, I apologize too. I just run at work today.
And, and I, um, and councillor, uh, councillor Aubrey was distracting me. She's also joining in on the meeting. We had a lovely discussion, so, um, if you bear with me. Also included should have been on the meetings minutes for, uh, the following meeting, um, which, uh, so, um, so I guess if, if maybe councillor, I, what I will do is it can councillor Heed withdraw his motion?
I will withdraw the motion.
And then, um, and can we get a withdrawal of the second if possible?
I withdraw my second.
Uh, and I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve the meeting minutes of August sixth, 2020. Contingent on any corrections that, um, you know, may be discussed now.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Um. Are we still pending more minutes from other meetings? I just wanted to make sure that so we're only.
So what I had asked, uh, for the other meeting minutes with the, uh, the, our second meeting with, um, our joint meeting, that, uh, the meeting submitted by Cork, the joint meeting minutes, that we would endorse those meeting minutes.
Oh, so you're, cause I, I listened to their meeting last night and they didn't submit anything. They were waiting for, all right, so it's, I guess it might be a communication thing. All right, thank you. Uh, they have not submitted anything yet, so.
Okay, all right. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll speak with, um, with the chair, um, just regarding those meeting minutes, um, and then, um, we'll, we'll discuss best action forward and then the next meeting we will approve those, but, um.
All right. Yeah, at least that there's some collaboration on them, because if it's going to be joint meeting, that way you guys are both on board, so.
Without a doubt, and actually, um, and since that, that's very timely considering, um, two weeks from now, we will have our, our second joint meeting with them.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Fantastic. So now with that housekeeping, uh, over, I will call for a vote on the approval of the minutes. Uh, all those in favor?
I.
I. Uh, opposed. Uh, passes unanimously. All right, uh, new business. Uh, so first and foremost, um, uh, review of police policies. You know, our committee in the last few weeks, um, or month have deliberated on, um, policies and procedures and as it relates to, uh, not just, uh, establishment of the police civilian review board, which we'll discuss, um, and, um, you know, shortly, but also just policies in general. You know, uh, as you know, the, the chief, uh, several, almost, I think, now two months ago, presented the, uh, that updated, um, uh, an update of the policies and procedures and, uh, among other things. So I, I know we've taken a focus on, you know, discussing, um, you know, the establishment of the police civilian review board, but, you know, in addition, we also have, uh, the ability to look at other things and, and just, you know, now that, again, we've been talking about this for a while and, you know, many of you have been thinking about what to do next, I, my question to the committee is, um, how you would like to proceed with, um, kind of, uh, everything else, uh, that is, uh, everything else, uh, outside of the, uh, establishment of the police civilian review board?
Um, are we, do we have something in, in, um, that we're looking to review or are we just speaking generally and down the future?
Just ju- generally. If, uh, if, if no councillors, I know, I know you both have a lot to say. So I, I, you know, I'd be happy to kind of kick off discussions kind of where, where maybe my, my head is at. Just talking to, you know, councillor Bordelone and councillor Heed and, and members of the court committee, uh, Chair, uh, Chairman Thomas, um, you know, I, I think one thing I, I would like the, the town to do, especially since, you know, we have been asking for data and information from the town, I, I think it would be appropriate if, uh, the police department and the town, um, pose, you know, uh, posted data and, and almost a maintain kind of a database of, uh, just information about, you know, stops and, um, you know, uh, arrests, uh, so that, you know, the town, uh, uh, so that residents or, you know, the media or whomever, uh, at any time, uh, can just look up on the town website and kind of find out where the state, town stands on, on issues relating to crime or, um, policing matters. And so I, I think, you know, and for really anything, whether it's financial data, you know, the town or, or public safety data, I think, you know, the more the town, um, publishes, the more, you know, transparent the town is and, um, you know, it's a way to improve accountability. So, you know, in long, short and long term, I would like the, the town to, you know, again, publish that data, maintain a database of, you know, s- crime statistics and, and, um, stops and, um, I think Waterford actually, uh, published art of a dashboard, um, several months back after, you know, in the aftermath of, uh, George, George Floyd's murder and, uh, there were, there were several, you know, there were protests in near, in nearly every town and city in America. And, um, I just think that's the right approach. So, um, I don't, you know, uh, whether or not we'd need to draft an ordinance to do that or kind of write a policy, do it, do an hour resolution saying we want this to have, the town to move forward with this, um, whatever the best path forward to do that, you know, I'm happy to entertain, um, but, uh, that's just something I would like to do, uh, and I'm, you know, and there are, I think, as maybe a few other ideas I have, but I, uh, like to, um, hear from other councillors first.
Um, do I just go or do you want me to wait or?
Uh, yeah, councillor Bordelone.
This is more laid back, I'm sorry, so.
A very laid back meeting, no. Yeah.
I don't want to be saying I'm out of turn or anything. So, um, yes, thank you. Uh, no, I think it's a great idea. I think it's important that we have, I know that the website's going to be up and running soon, the town website is, so, you know, we received, uh, correspondence about that and one of the big things that I was asking, um, as far as transparency, is making sure that, you know, even the, the change of, uh, the police, uh, the handbook, uh, guide, you know, guidance, uh, that i- is still being worked on. I know it's a long process and, uh, I respect that, you know, deliberation and time, but even having stuff like that be posted as well, um, with time, uh, once, uh, the writing of all of that is done and complete. So I think it'd be important to have that accessible to the community, um, at large so that it's, you know, people can reference any, you know, of the requirements or expectations. So it is a pretty clear cut, dry, you know, situation where you can, um, see, uh, how and, and why policies are the way they are.
Yeah.
So having that accessibility would be important and along with what you just, um, mentioned.
Great. Uh, ca- councillor Heed?
I think, um, on a very basic level, um, I, I'd like to have, uh, you know, define who would be on, on the board, uh, um, and, you know, limited to, I guess, five people, so there's an odd number.
Oh, uh, councillor Heed, uh, we're, we're going to discuss, um, the civilian, police civilian review board after this agenda item.
Oh, gotcha. This is just on the review of police policies, is that right?
Correct. Apologize if I didn't make that clear ahead of time.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah.
Um, I, I apologize. I think it's not a called the handbook. I think it's called the policies and procedures, I'm thinking, I just left work where we deal with like handbooks on every different platform for every medical, so, and some things are called policy and procedures, but yes, this is called policies and procedures, so it's, thank you.
Um, so do you, uh, so just, just to recap, so councillor Bordelone, you're saying you would like to, um, kind of review those policies and procedures more in depth?
Um, I think it would be important. I think, you know, as town councillors, we should know what we're asking town officials to do. We have a town manager oversees it, which is wonderful, um, but yes, if complaints come through, we should also know, um, on the safety committee, um, not just the police force, fire, safety, you know, the whole, how the whole town operates as a whole, I think it's important, not singling out just law enforcement, but, um, definitely the police policy, uh, and procedures is a good diving board. I did, um, write down some towns where you can go on and actually thumb through theirs and it's like, it's there, it's accessible, it's anybody moving into the town can see, anybody looking to get hired onto the police force can find it, uh, it's very user friendly. So I just think that would be a good starting point, uh, point, and I think as that is revised, as they're working on it and that becomes available to start uploading, I think that would be wonderful to have.
And, and I, I think in many respects now with technology, you know, so much can be, you know, back in the day, you would have, you know, guy behind, a guy or gal behind a, you know, the typewriter or the, you know, the computer and they would have to manually put in, to manually put in, uh, data. And now, you know, I, I think in many respects, data can be automatically uploaded based on, you know, the, whatever information an officer puts in, uh, to their, you know, their computer, um, when, you know, at a, uh, you know, during arrest or pulling someone over, um, so there's just a, a lot, you know, technology as time has evolved has, you know, um, ha- ha- you know, has allowed us to, um, ex- access data and information so much more easily.
I, I wonder if, uh, is councillor Bordelone's just, uh, list of, uh, the things that are happening becomes made available if it can not include people's names? I mean, I know that like in the paper, they, they publish the arrest things, but anything else, you know, the smaller things, uh, just for personal privacy?
A- absolutely, absolutely. All right.
There are, um, to, sorry, uh, councillor, um, Bumgardner, uh, may I add another point?
Yes, of course.
To councillor Heed, uh, yes, I think the, the procedures and policies should be up there, which is just, you know, a guide, a guidance of how everything operates, but I think the, um, having any of the, uh, different complaints go up, yes, there is a way to make them anonymous, um, you know, or using initials even, um, or there's a lot of different ways that different towns have done different ways of posting it, so that's something else that could be looked at, but I do think it's important to, um, keep people, uh, you know, anonymous as we can. Obviously, we can't keep, uh, prevent for somebody else, uh, being put in the paper in that capacity, but, um, for tracking purposes and for people to review, you know, what's going on, let it be complaints or, or just in general, any, um, encounters or, you know, situations, you, you, there is a way to make it anonymous or a little bit more or less to identify.
Right.
Is that what you were asking councillor Heed?
Yes. That's perfect, thank you.
Well, this, this was excellent and I know, you know, I, I, um, next week when we meet with, um, the, uh, in two weeks when we meet with the police chief along with Cork, um, I think that these are questions that certainly can be asked to, to the chief as well, um, and, uh, outside of, again, I'm sure the questions we'll be asking him about, you know, establishing the police, um, establishing a police civilian review board. So if there's nothing else on that agenda item, um, I will move forward into, uh, the realm of, uh, civilian, police civilian and review boards.
I, I had one more thing to that item, honestly. I think it's also important too, you were asking like what the direction down the road. I think, you know, the safety committee can be, can be an open platform where, um, at any point, I mean, obviously, everybody goes through our town manager, right? Cause they're, they're, he is their direct boss, boss, and so, um, you know, the chain of command, uh, but I, I think it would be, uh, more than, we would be more than welcoming to have, uh, any, anything that involves any form of safety in the town, um, to have stuff directed to us and they're welcome to meet with us. Um, I think it'd be great if they wanted to come give updates to the safety committee, that way we have stuff to, to bring back and report to the town council. So I think that also could be used in, the safety committee can be used in that way as well, as a way of generating information and, um, you know, uh, providing, um, information as to what's going on, um, that, you know, I think in a smaller, uh, setting and, uh, yeah, I think it could go both ways, so. Welcoming in town staff as well.
Definitely. Well put. All right. All right, so with that, we'll move, uh, to, uh, establishment of, uh, the police civilian review board. Um, excuse me. Again, no motion, um, there's no motion on the table. We will continue discussions on, um, what we would like to structure, or how we would like to structure a police civilian review board. You know, I, uh, I, in our, my discussions with councillor Heed and councillor Bordelone, I've indicated, um, you know, my significant and strong interest, uh, in establishing a, a police civilian review board, ideally with, uh, subpoena power. I know in the last couple of weeks, we've had presentation from our own town attorney as well as an outside, um, uh, legal counsel, you know, who is the, uh, policy counsel for the ACLU, which played an active role in drafting the language for the police accountability bill, um, the state legislature passed and the governor subsequently signed into law this summer, um, which included a, in series of, of law changes that, um, overhauled, um, policing in our communities. One of those changes in, in the state statute, uh, or, uh, you know, um, um, one section in, in the police accountability bill, um, grants municipalities the ability to establish a police civilian review board with subpoena power, um, but there was some question as to whether or not, uh, our town charter, um, enable, would enable, uh, the, uh, the council to establish a review board with, um, some oversight powers and, and subpoena power, um, and, you know, they could investigate complaints made against, uh, officers and police department. And, um, you know, there, there was clearly in, in, um, you know, for those who didn't watch the meeting, um, a difference in opinion between both, um, attorney Duggan, uh, and the ACLU policy counsel. And so, uh, you know, my question to the council is, uh, you know, this is, um, I, I believe that it is within the realm of, uh, the, the town to establish a police civilian review board with the subpoena power, and the big question is how, how would we want to structure that subpoena power? So I will, um, you know, you have the floor to councillor Bordelone or councillor Heed, um, to pick up from there.
Uh, just, just to refer, for sure minds, uh, what's, what are the, um, proposals from the dual attorneys on, on how to structure that?
Well, in, 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 in reality, I, I'm not sure, just reviewing the tape several times over, I'm not sure attorney Duggan really gave us an alternative. I, I think she said certainly we can establish a, a police civilian review board, uh, that is advisory in nature, um, which almost would follow the PACT model adopted in the city and that, uh, at the end of the day is, would leave volunteers advising the police departments on best practices and whatnot, but they have no teeth, they have no oversight authority and it's largely, um, feel good isn't right to work, but it's a, you know, it's a partnership that enhances relations, right? Uh, and, and so, but this, that, I, I respect that and I admire that, um, and I, I, you know, I, I think it's so important that our community, you know, gets to know what our police department is doing, but they're, you know, the whole point of a review board is to, you know, have a body in the place in case there are, is any, uh, malpractice or any, um, you know, uh, any misconduct within the police department. And, um, you know, youth have been calling for that, young people, you know, thousands of people took to the streets, uh, you know, in Groton several months back protesting, you know, misconduct, um, and that, you know, it, that, you know, and again, just the, you know, preface this by saying good cops shouldn't have anything to worry about. And again, the overwhelming vast majority of police officers in Groton that I've, um, personally interacted with have, are nothing but great cops, um, and, you know, treat, treat, uh, the public with respect. Uh, however, uh, that doesn't mean that if even, uh, a bad cop or even a good cop, um, you know, does, um, you know, uh, uh, breaks the law or, um, you know, uh, you know, the, you know, is negligent on the job, that there, you know, there are repercussions. So, uh, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, well, sort of. I guess, I mean, we, we entrust the, uh, police officers, uh, the police department, uh, in particular, you know, with, with a lot of authority, um, and, uh, I don't think that there should be a problem with, uh, working with them to make sure our community is, um, you know, that, that abuses or misconduct or errors of judgment, uh, aren't being made and if they are, that they're being corrected and, and just that we have oversight to make sure they're being corrected. So, uh, whether it's a partnership that doesn't have teeth or it's one with subpoena powers, um, I'd, I'd like to see both, uh, to be honest. I think subpoena power comes into play when, uh, our chief, uh, the, the chief ultimately is responsible, uh, for the, the police officers, um, and if there's a conflict between what we see on the, the civilian side, uh, and it's not resolved with the, with the chief or with the union for that matter, um, you know, I'm not sure how we would get around that, um, like what would subpoena powers look like? I think there should be some recourse in that, in that regard, um, but just not sure what it would look like, so, um, I'm just not sure, but I, I would support considering.
Is it okay to chime in?
Councillor Bordelone?
You know, it's, for me, it's not a good cop, bad cop. There's good and bad in everyone, you know, for me, you know, I, you know, in the medical field, you know, people have seen, people do things that they shouldn't, they swear to an oath in the medical field as well, and every, everything we do, we, we, we have a moral compass that we have to abide by, but we are human and things do happen in circumstances and people are sometimes led, um, down a different path in, in life that, um, you know, we have to answer and be accountable for the actions and, uh, in a lot of other structures of, of, of town, uh, government jobs, different things in life, um, you know, the typical thing, if I cross any line at my job in any way, I, I, I'm subject to fire without a doubt. Um, and so, you know, I just, I just don't want it to feel like it's an attack. I think it's just, what I'd like to see is that, yes, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement, I wanted to be a cop, I wanted to work in corrections or be a probation officer, I served as a PA assistant for a short time, you know, in an internship in college, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement, good and bad, because I think when you look at, uh, people who, who serve a community, mom, in this high intense stress, things start to happen and, um, intentions are always good when they start it, and that's what I believe. I believe people get, for me, it's a, it's a blanket understanding of respect and honesty and honesty until otherwise proven. I don't walk up thinking, hmm, is that person, you know, going to be dishonest or, you know, untrustworthy or I can't trust him. I give everybody the trust openly and honestly until otherwise proven. So I don't know that beyond the subpoena power point, and I know I'm taking a long to get there, I apologize, it was a long day at work, my brain is moving very slowly right now, um, I think that looking at the policies and procedures of what the CRB and, and having, uh, the discussion of looking how we can maybe, um, once again, it's not taking away anything from law enforcement or the police officers or a town manager or lieutenant for that matter, or, or chief or captain, but looking at how we can maybe help or help to write, um, you know, adding in, um, some ways to look at the hiring process. Every town has a different hiring process, so there could be a different, um, say set of questions or, or, you know, ways that we look to, uh, make sure we're getting the best officer and, and the, the, that someone may not come already seasoned with certain biases, um, that could influence their job. I mean, I, I think that's important. I know from even some of my screenings, when I looked at going into corrections and stuff, no one asked me, you know, anything about, um, certain things, but, you know, there's some things that we can kinda choose to add, um, to enhance what's already there because I think they do a great job and there is a great screening process, but when is that, you know, been reviewed, been reviewed last? And, and maybe there's some, um, questions or things that as a town we want to add to help, you know, um, not take away the, um, the powers that be that already do the hiring and the firing necessarily, but help like the, um, the way that that should look or have some suggestions and, 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 and policy changes that maybe can enhance what's already there. So I don't see this as like taken away or, or, um, taking over or telling them what they're going to do, but just, um, talking and, and being a part of, just, you know, a great example in town is looking, uh, for, uh, the superintendent, okay, the new one, the search is out, right? And they formed all these committees and they have the parent and the elected officials. Unfortunately, I have yet to be able to attend one, my schedule has not allowed me, but I think everyone has, you know, a, a, a part in that and I think it's important to, um, say things that our, our town is passionate about and what we want to see here. I know in some other towns, um, first and foremost, some towns want to hire local first.
Yep.
Um, and make that a priority first. I, I know some of the interviews that I had went to back in the day, they were like, do you live in the state and what town do you live in? And I think, um, I'm not saying that, well, if we don't get anybody from the surrounding towns to, to apply, that we don't take anyone and we go without, but I think it is important when you have people who are serving and protecting the community where they live, it builds a, you know, a, a even greater bond than, uh, because you, those are your neighbors.
Yep.
So even just something like that, is that in our policy saying, you know, that we are, are actively minority, minority recruiting and what does that look like and what are we doing to do that? And, um, are we looking, um, to actively, um, recruit, um, from our local area, you know, and surrounding area? So, um, I, I don't know, I, I, once again, I don't see it as a taking over the power, but I see like enhancement and growth and, and, um, allowing, you know, having that working relationship with our municipality to allow for some ideas to be generated and be part of the process, I think is another way to look at it. Thank you, and sorry to take the long train to get there. I just jumped on and kept going, I apologize, I'm, I'm exhausted tonight.
Councillor Heed?
Uh, yeah, that, that, she took the long train and I was just there for the ride.
Thanks, Conrad. Long ride back from Norwich.
All right. So, when I am, you know, I'm, I was looking at, uh, just kind of methods that, uh, you know, or exercises the committee could, um, could do to kind of sketch out our need, like a needs assessment, um, to assess, you know, what our, our needs are, what our, you know, our desires are, you know, what, what we would like to do and, and kind of juxtapose that to what our needs are and then also, um, just to be able, I'm sorry, to organize our thoughts better about, um, kind of the specifics of, of establishing, you know, of, you know, uh, again, what kind of powers we would grant to CPRB, um, and also, um, you know, recognizing what Cork has been doing, the, um, the, you know, the RTM committee, um, responsible for reviewing the CPRB, um, you know, uh, you know, which they've done for, you know, several months now and will be issuing a set of recommendations or, you know, in research as well. So, you know, we very much welcome the results of their findings, you know, especially considering a lot of work that. a lot of work that we've done, you know, we've done, we've done jointly with, with Quark, you know, in terms of, you know, the meetings, and, and with, with outside groups and individuals coming in, and, and, you know, providing their two cents on the best path forward. So, you know, I, I think that, that feedback will be very critical to kind of our decision making process, and will be helpful, especially when you consider that what ultimate, whatever ultimately, if we do pass, you know, we do write an ordinance granting a, a police civilian review board, that entity, or, you know, that, that ordinance would be, would go for, before a vote to the, before the R T M for a vote. So, you know, I think that's important, you know, obviously, we work together, but just say, you know, more generally, any, any, any kind of takeaways from our two previous meetings, I, you know, specifically, you know, when you juxtapose our town attorney's opinion, and against, you know, the policy councils, and also kind of what your thoughts were on feedback to Merrill Lanier provided from the N W A C P, and, and also faculty advisor of the Groton Youth Collective, they're one of the organizing groups for the Black Student Union, and I'm not, actually not sure if she's a faculty advisor for Black Student Union and/or the Groton Youth Collective as well, but nonetheless, Groton Youth Collective was the group organized, that organized last week's weekend protest in, in Groton. And so, you know, those, those kids have been, you know, on the front lines, talking about, you know, making their demands, and I think it's really, it's beautiful to watch, and they're getting involved in, in, you know, movement, and, you know, and speaking out against injustice, and I, I think that should be welcomed, and that, you know, we have youth in our community, you know, speaking out forcefully, and, and organizing, it's, you know, they're, I think they're outdoing many, many adults. So, you know, they, more, more power to them, I hope they keep it up, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that in their demands, they, you know, they mentioned, you know, creating a group that has oversight powers, and, you know, and made it very clear that there, there is just no tolerance at all for any kind of form of police misconduct. And, and let's be honest, no community prepares to have police misconduct in their community, no community prepared, you know, Minneapolis wasn't prepared for George Floyd's murder, Louisville wasn't prepared for Brown and Taylor's murder, so no community is ever prepared for that. So, you know, I, you know, I, having said what I said, that, you know, we, we shouldn't have anything to worry about, because we do have good cops, I, I think it was very important what, what Counsel Boardman stated after, you know, I'd said that. So, you know, just want to kind of clear that up, but, you know, I, I absolutely agree. And again, you know, the devil's in the details, we, we have to discuss really what, how, what that ordinance looks like. So, you know, we'll get, that Quark will, has reviewed what other police civilian review, you know, what other communities have done in establishing their police civilian review board, all this, all these communities in, in Connecticut, I know Hartford has one, New Haven has one, I believe East Haven has one, they all have very different powers, none of them currently hold subpoena power. And with the state legislation, I believe the Hartford Police Civilian Review Board will, and, you know, there, that, that police, that, that review board will have even more teeth to investigate misconduct, and there are also, you know, questions of, you know, if, if the police, if the police chief were to investigate a, do an investigation, I think Counsel Heed asked this question too, in the first meeting to the town attorney about if the police chief were to investigate a complaint made to, against an officer on misconduct, right? And the police chief cleared the officer, and then subsequently, the, that complaint went to a police civilian review board, and they said, ah, I think the police chief was wrong in this, you know, in, in, in stating there was no misconduct, and then the police chief goes back and says, actually, you know what, I think you're right, I, there, there clearly was misconduct, and subsequently, you know, you know, disciplines accordingly. You know, the big question is, well, in, would a civilian police review board solely do the investigation? Would the police chief at all be involved in that? Could that be problematic with the town charter? So there are a lot of series of, of kind of unending questions that we really do need to kind of find answers to, and I, I understand we received that opinion from the town attorney, but I almost wonder, is it, you know, do we write an ordinance with everything, you know, write an ordinance based off, that is reflective of, you know, the, of what our community is calling for, and what counselors, you know, are calling for, or, you know, and kind of do a wait-and-see approach to, would it, would it be litigated? I don't know, and these are questions that I think are appropriate to discuss openly, because, you know, if we pass it, you better believe there will be people opposed to, you know, creating a police civilian review board, saying, no, it's not, it shouldn't be up to a body of unelected or appointed, you know, townspeople, it should be up to the police department, the discretion of the chief, and the chief only. So I've been rambling, I apologize, but just, again, kind of indicative of where my head is, and happy to yield the floor to any, any counselor.
I would like the floor counselor, or chair, Bumgarner, as I'm listening to you, it's, and ideas crossing my mind that we may be reacting to like George Floyd, and to the, you know, the, the clear undeniable abuse that's happened across the country over time, but I'm wondering if, if one, one thing we should focus on is more of, instead of being reactive to, okay, there's a problem, how, how deep do we go on the power? Not instead of, but maybe in addition to, we consider setting the table, and as part of the process of the review board, so we, we ensure that it has a place at the table when it comes to reviewing police policies, but also in the hiring of the police chiefs, so that you can impact the culture that's going to be created at the police department. And that's, that's maybe more of a cooperative, friendly approach, where we set expectations before they arrive, and the communication is there, the understanding is there, and, you know, it's made clear right up front what we want from our public safety.
Thank you, Counsel Heed, Counsel Boardman?
Yeah, I can respectfully, you know, agree on some parts of what Counsel Heed is saying. I, you know, I, I hear what Counsel Bumgarner is saying about, you know, the, the things that have happened. I guess, you know, it's happening everywhere, and it's happened for a long time. I just think that we are able to capture it much more than we ever have been before due to technology, but it was happening a lot more. You know, so, yes, I don't think that these particular items are making us be more like reactive in its per se, I think it's, you know, sometimes unfortunately, something bad happens, and people say they've had enough, and change has to happen. So, yes, I agree, I think that we, this model, as I have stated before, it doesn't really say that anything has happened in our town that has been bad, that I know of, or that I can say, that's come before me, or that anything's going to, or that anybody that we currently have on staff I'm concerned about, or that's the reason for the change. But I will say that it's important that we do set the precedent in Groton, and as, you know, as long before we're here, or watching, or a part of this, you know, other people will be hired on all these other different positions, and I think it just is important to have something clear cut as to ways in which things should function and go about, and to prevent things from like this, from occurring here. But I really think the key for me, and one of the pieces that I can't say enough, is that, you know, the demographics of, of our municipality must reflect the community in which it serves. Growing up here, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen many minorities in high-ranking positions, not just from police, but across all of our municipalities, fire, in our town hall, and I don't mean, I, I, you know, it's, women are discriminated against, it's, it's a plethora, and it's not just black, it's black and brown people, people of color as a whole, you know, community. And so I, I just, you know, I think truly closing those gaps, and really looking to put more people that are obviously qualified in leadership roles is also going to help with some of this. And it is a huge progression in the right way to make sure that that's important in our town. As I said at other meetings, I, looking at our neighboring police force, which would be the city, that is a, you know, part of Groton, but has its own police force, I think they do a phenomenal job in that area. They're a smaller police force, and, but the, the minority representation is, is pretty high there, based on the demographics that it serves. And, you know, and it's not a negative push or pull, I think it's really important that if we keep saying, everything's wonderful, and everything's great, and there's nothing wrong, that's concerning. Nothing is perfect, and nothing doesn't need improvement or change. Change is why we're here today, I, I, I think, we're even talking about this. Change is why, change is not a bad thing. So those are the kinds of things that I think about, is how can we now, you know, look back on this and figure out ways to only advance as a community? And it's not saying that, once again, that anything has happened or is going to happen, but it, it basically helps us to really start looking at the social structures of our demographics in our town, and really looking at our recruiting, and maybe ways in which we maybe missed, like, I was reading on another town's website, where they have an open position, and they were stating how they're actively minority recruiting, that, you know, depending on the position, if it's a position that they can kind of hold a little longer, they're trying to, to really expand that minority recruiting, and really open up that door even wider, before saying, well, we got five applicants here, and they're all wonderful, and kind of taking that, you know, kind of really broadening, and really investing into that, and I think that is important. I think it's important, as a minority myself in the community, where I had, you know, there was maybe one minority teacher at the high school, you know, there wasn't anybody that looked like me in the town, that, that held any of these positions. And I think it's important, as a community, to truly grow, that we develop into those areas, not just, you know, you know, people's, you know, backgrounds at all levels, and, you know, gender equality, and, you know, personal preference or choice for their partners, and, and the way that they choose to live, all those things, not just color, are important, and I think that we do a great job in Groton, but we're not perfect, but it is no town. And so I just can't say enough that the want for change doesn't mean that anybody's doing anything wrong, and they haven't worked hard to create or make this town as wonderful as, as it is already, but it's important that sometimes we look at it through a different lens. Thank you.
If I could just respond real quick, I apologize, I'm speaking imprecisely, I was, what you heard was a train of thought coming from my mouth that wasn't checked prior to speaking. I had no way meant to say that I don't think we need oversight. I was just saying that, sort of in addition to oversight, which, you know, I totally 100% support, I think maybe we should include in, in the parameters of a civilian review board, setting the table, which is, I think precisely what Counsel Boardman was speaking about, a way to encourage diversity, to set expectations. This is, and, and we should clearly state diversity in hiring practices everywhere, because it needs to be thought about, and we need to remember to accomplish that. I, I agree 110% that there is what's called systematic racism, which implies that things are actively racist, but it means that your system has built-in inequities, and they need to be addressed. So it's, I, I'm 100% in agreement with what Counsel Boardman said, and, and I apologize that, you know, what I said wasn't clear. I just think we should add that to, to this process. So not to distract from, from the initial question, which is how far should we go, I think, on, what is it, the investigatory powers? I wanted to also put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Heed, and no way did I, I take it the wrong way at all, so.
Thank you both for that, and Counsel Heed, you, you mentioned investigatory powers, and do you, or do you also include subpoena powers in that, when you?
I do, you know, the, the hope would be that it doesn't get to that point, and I think that there should be a process established that creates an endpoint, where if, if we don't come to an agreement on, on things, we being like the civilian review board, and the police, the police union, the, the town manager, that then there is something that goes in, that comes into play, and it needs to be very clear and very well understood, because these things do happen, bad things happen, that's, that's life. And as I said in, in the beginning, we entrust a tremendous amount of authority to our, our police forces, and we back them, and we support them 100%, but sometimes things happen, and we need to be, we also need to make sure that we're reviewing, you know, anything that happens, so that's all.
I also, quickly, and I apologize, wanted to say, once again, not that anything's not happening here, but another great example of how sometimes structures can turn a way that maybe it shouldn't, and it can happen to any form of people empowered, let it be medical, let it be law enforcement, but look at Georgia, look at every incident that happened. In that case, that was trying to, that was being covered up internally. Now, a cop did not shoot the gentleman that was running that day, okay? So that, that, that man that was out for a run was not shot by a cop, let's be clear. But what happened after he was shot is the concern that one needs to think about. So when people say, you know, let's not be, you know, because, you know, we talk about George Floyd a lot, and that name comes out, but that young gentleman going on a stroll not too far from where a good friend of mine lives down in Georgia, where I've been, thinking the way that was handled, because the killers in this case actually had connections, were formerly involved, or had connections, and it was being covered up until the outside agency had come in. And once again, I'm no expert on this, but I'm just simply saying that those are the concerns where things fell through, and, and that shouldn't, if that well-oiled system that everyone is, is saying exists, how did this fall through, and could this happen in another municipality somewhere else? I know here we say that we, in some instance, would go to Ledgerd for something if we needed it. But once again, you know, it wasn't until the state had come in from the outside and fully investigated, did more justice start to be served, and there's still more questions and answers coming out of that. But those are the things that I come to mind and think of. It's not necessarily the officer with the gun, or anything happening in that same, you know, avenue that I'm looking at, once they got the information, and what happened in that case. So those are the things that kind of come to my mind, when I look at the big picture of ways that we make sure that, that internal government system is kept. of ways that we make sure that, that internal government system is kept accountable and there's someone else that could have spoke up and stopped and said, this is not right. And, and, but they didn't feel that they could and somehow it was continuing to keep going and it wasn't going to come out. And, and that's a concern. Thank you.
No, absolutely. Thank you for that, Counselor Bordelain. So again, Counselor Heed, I had asked about the subpoena power and, you know, you, you said you hope that it would never get to that point, but obviously we, we can hope, but in the case that an issue could arise to the point where it could require a subpoena power, do you believe it is something that, do you think it is a power that could be, should be granted to that review board?
I would like to see it granted to the review board unequivocally, yes. I think there are, there are a lot of challenges that would need to be resolved. For example, our town attorney and the other attorney have conflicting opinions, why is that? And then, of course, we, we know, and I'm not speaking against unions, but police unions can protect, any union can protect, you know, the, they protect their workers, that's what they do. And so we'd have to understand how those, how that functions and may have to have like a, a union representative or somebody who, not a union representative, but somebody who understands how unions function to advise the advisory committee. That might be something that, that we could aim for. Yeah, is that clear? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, most definitely. But you, what, what, do you, you know, do you say that after having listened to the policy council from the ACLU?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I very much enjoyed, I mean, they, they were brilliant. That was an excellent meeting. They did an outstanding presentation and, yeah, I, I agree.
And Counselor Bordelain, just a follow-up to that, do you, do, would you, I'll repeat the question, it was surrounding the subpoena power, is that something you would like to move forward with, you know, as we're drafting our ordinance?
I definitely think after looking at the work that the court committee does, has done and looking at everything, I would like to see what their recommendations, because, excuse me, as the county council, we said a lot of the, you know, finalization of all that, but I do want to state that I, I do think having multiple opinions from different districts with their thoughts on that would be important to see. One of my philosophies are, you know, sometimes less is better, but in some cases, I think it's important to have as much as you need and hope that you never need to use it. But, you know, in the case where if you do, it's there and since Groton seems to not have any problems, one would then gather that we would be probably a town that wouldn't have to use it and that's great. But moving down the road, you know, looking at it, it's, it's, you know, you can use a lot of analogies where some things have come forward in our town or have, and people are questioning why certain things can't happen and because those thoughts weren't thought about then and it's not there and to go back and have to make major changes to something to add it is, is, can be cumbersome. So I think when setting policy, I look at all of it, you know, I can only speak from my line of work, when we look at the medical policy, we go from the most restrictive and, and, and then we, we, we alter it as needed. So I think it's important to look at that. I think it would be great to look at some of those other towns at one of our next meetings that are going to have, or looking into that and how they're starting to draft if they have, so that we can kind of reference that. But I, I think, I don't foresee that we're going to need it, you know, fully, you know, but I think it would be important because we do not know what may change in years to come. And I think if we're going to do our full due diligence on this, it's important to offer a range of things on there to make sure that if you need it, it's there. Thank you.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, Counselor Bordelain, to my knowledge, I believe we're the only municipality that does not have a police civilian review board. We're the only municipality that has, that is discussing establishing one right now, you know, in the aftermath of the police accountability bill. So, yeah, I, I, it's, I think it's actually a little difficult to compare ourselves to another town, you know, that is of similar size. Obviously, you know, Hartford, New Haven, you know, those are much larger municipalities that have much, much different circumstances and, you know, demographics that, you know, in comparison to Groton, just obviously, you know, in the case of Hartford, a more urban municipality, but a lot more people confined to, you know, to an area, it's very densely populated. So, you know, policing there is, is, is different, but nonetheless, we hold our officers, or we would hope we hold our officers to the same standards as a police department in any other municipality, whether it's a city, a small town, or a large city, that, you know, we hold our officers to the same ethics and standards, you know, as any other department. And because, you know, rest assured, if any one of us, you know, whether I'm, you know, I'd be in Hartford or you'd be in New Haven, or, you know, Conrad, you're in a, you know, a small town that has a resident state trooper, that you'd be treated by an officer with the same respect as you would, you know, me, me and both Portia and I being, you know, black people and, and, you know, Conrad being white, that we'd be treated equally and that that is so important. And, you know, that, that is the policing that I want to see, where everyone is treated equally and with respect and that, you know, officers doing proactive policing, you know, they prioritize violent crimes and don't focus on, you know, petty infractions and, you know, things of that nature, you know, that they focus on, on, on violence on the streets and, you know, eradicating sexual assault and abuses, you know, ensuring that children are not assaulted or harmed, you know, and, and, you know, ensuring that people with special needs are safe. I've discussed this openly, you know, with my brother who is on, on the autism spectrum, both myself and my mother and even my little sister at points have had to call the police department because my brother is having a, you know, a, you know, an aggressive, he's being aggressive and, you know, no fault of his own and he can't communicate like, you know, I can or like you can, Counselor Heed, or like you can, you know, Counselor Bordelain, and he, he can't communicate with his words like we can. And, and sometimes, you know, his emotions will get the best of him and, and, you know, and the best of me and the best of my sister and where it can become unsafe within our home. And the police departments have come and have deescalated situations with my brother. You know, there are many officers he knows by a first name basis and, and I'm so appreciative of them. And so I can't stress enough and say enough, there are good police officers out there. I've seen it, I've lived it, I've experienced it with our own city police officers and town police officers. So in no way, you know, our, our efforts and assault on, you know, police officers, you know, and, and we are so appreciative of the good ones, but we, rest assured, we want to make sure that the ones who, you know, are, you know, are not treating our, our citizens or residents with the respect, the same respect that they would expect for themselves, you know, we, we, we must hold those officers accountable. And I hope, you know, in, in my time, there, there is never an officer that, you know, you know, that, you know, displays a level of misconduct that would even need to, where that officer would need to be called before a police civilian review board. So I, that was a lot, you know, anybody can take the floor from there, you know, this, again, this is a discussion, you know, we've had a lot to, we've received a lot of information, you know, we, we have had just two meetings earlier, but there was a lot discussed at those two meetings and I think a lot of information that I think we could not at all retain that, you know, the night of, you know, I, I've looked back several times over, you know, watched some of the tapes and, and really tried to chew on those meetings. And to be honest with you, I, I still feel like I don't, you know, have a, a full idea of what a best path forward is because we receive such extensive information and I still think we need to deliberate on it, we need to chew on it, we need to, I think, you know, bring other counselors into discussions. I saw Counselor O'Bree, you know, was, was here as well, but, you know, especially if we want to see something that ultimately does get passed by the council as a whole, you know, it's important that we, we get their perspective, perspectives on this too. So I'll, I'll let, you know, any counselor take over, you know, from here, but just, I wanted to put in my two cents on that.
No, no, I agree completely, Counselor Bumgarner. In fact, I'm sitting here thinking the whole time, I need to go back and re-watch those videos again and go through all the, the material that we've received on this already. But it would be good to know some of these other towns, like what, what they have in place or, or something like that. Maybe we need to set up like a graph and say, these are things that towns have and which one has this characteristic, which one has that characteristic and just go down the line. So six towns have this characteristic, four have this one, all of them have this one. You know, it's like when you're going to select which kind of a credit card you want to get, you know, it says, depending on what level you're paying for, it depends on what level of services you get. That might, that might be a way to sort of quantify what everybody else is doing and what we need to do to go further to make this effective. Because it would be, you know, really nice to, to do something, I mean, we can do something basic to get it off, off the, off and starting, like, yeah, to get it started, but ultimately we should be reaching to do a world-class ordinance here.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Bordelain?
No, I think that's great. I, I think, I think it's important that we pick apart the policy we currently have as well. Because it's still in draft mode and it's not up on the website and they're still in the midst of, you know, forming it, it's hard to know what we really have.
Well, we, we, Counselor Bordelain, we have nothing on the books now, we have no, there is no body, actually, outside of this newly reconstituted public safety committee, there is no body in town government that has any kind of oversight or any kind of ongoing discussion on public safety matters or policing matters in our town. Probably the closest thing to that is the traffic authority, which is co-chaired by the John Bird, you know, our town manager and our police chief. But outside of that, in terms of any kind of policing discussion or vote, you know, yes, the town council and the RTM on, you know, pro, you know, appropriating funds and, you know, when it comes to budget season and, you know, hiring of our police chief and other, you know, members of the police department, we really don't have a body that is dedicated to talking about these things. So, you know, I, I think it's welcome, I, you know, quite frankly, even after we, whatever we decide to do with this ordinance, I hope we can, like you mentioned, Counselor Bordelain, we continue having a public safety committee, you know. Public safety can mean a lot of things, you know. Not too long ago, we had a pedestrian death in the city of Groton in front of electric boat. No one should be mowed over by a motor vehicle in our community. Nobody should lose their life because of a motor vehicle in our community, especially if they're just walking from, from work to, you know, to their, to home. That's, that's egregious to me. And so, you know, public safety to me is complete streets, you know, and our town council will be deliberating on a, a complete street and I, I don't mean to, to lead us astray, I'll bring us back, I promise. You know, our town council will be talking about complete streets, you know, designing our streets in a way that prioritizes pedestrian safety above the needs of a motor vehicle being able to travel at a faster speed. That's important policy, right? That ensures that our, whenever we invest in our infrastructure, we build our roads in a way that we have safe, safe sidewalks, crosswalks, you know, infrastructure again that prioritizes walkers. And we also have bike lanes, you know, we have protected bike lanes that shields, you know, cyclists from traffic, from parked cars. So, you know, it's, that, that, it, it doesn't, you know, public safety isn't just about police, you know, it's also about ensuring that, you know, we have a fire apparatus, you know, that is, you know, here we have how many fire districts, you know, that's a great trivia question. You know, I, I believe it's above, you know, it's six or seven. And then on top of, you know, the fact that some of our larger employers and our subbase, you know, you know, you know, our larger employers have their own police, their own fire departments as well, such as Pfizer. So, you know, the, I, I hope we can kind of keep having these discussions and somehow be able to contribute to the council or at least be available to kind of maybe dig in a little deeper than we would have the, the time afforded to us in how to look at public safety matters. Because at the end of the day, what we are viewing public safety in my eye is about saving lives, is protecting lives, you know, in the same, you know, it's, it's about protecting our children from COVID-19, right? Or, you know, our families from COVID-19, it's all, it touches everything. So I'll, I guess I'll leave it at that and yield the floor to another counselor, but, you know, I just wanted to, you know, on the record, agree with, with, with Counselor Bordelain that our public safety committee, you know, we, we, we should be talking about, yes, establishing a police civilian review board, but I think the scope of our, of this group can, can definitely be, you know, can, it can be expanded in a way where we can really lend our expertise and guidance on issues that I think may require a little bit more research that maybe the council doesn't have the time to dedicate. Go ahead, Counselor Bordelain?
I, I think that is a great point because the RTM does have a safety committee and as the court committee disbands, I think it would be, you know, great to have that collaboration with the safety committee that's on the RTM. And I do believe when our mayor appointed this committee, that it was going to be a standing committee, even outside, the way that I remember it was, this was the first referral item, but it was going to be a committee that would be kind of back that they already had and, and so I do think it'd be great. As far as the policies I was talking about, I think one of these meetings, it would be great as hopefully some of that, the police policies and procedures start to come out as are being revised and they're not complete yet, I think it would be important to, we as a committee, to start to look at that because it's going to be new to the council. So I think the safety committee would be a great committee to start to really read that, to understand what the new right is going to look like, that they've been working on even before the, the state change had came down. So they were in the midst of doing that. So I think it would be helpful too, to see where are we going? It also would be helpful to see what we have as far as an existing policy that is currently being, I guess, revised and written. But maybe some of the sections that are complete, we can start to utilize and take a look at and, and, and start to interpret it a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain?
I was just going to say that you're on mute. I saw your mouth moving, didn't hear anything.
Yeah, I think I, I'm unmuted now, right? I think we're good. All right. So I, I realize we didn't have communications, you know, I'm, I, I think I've said what I've needed to today and I'm not sure about any other counselor, if they have anything else, but I, I realized we didn't have communications. So I guess I'll offer, you know, the communications, you know, we have nothing else to talk about the, the police civilian review board and we can, you know, maybe allow this opportunity for folks to communicate, offer their communications. I think we're kind of segueing into that anyway, based on how our discussion was evolving.
Well, let's see, for communication, well, two things. I guess on, on the establishment of a civilian I guess on, on the establishment of a civilian review board, I wanted to ask, what kind of interaction would we have with the public? And I guess that, that would need to be determined. Normally you have a board commission, something like that. They sit in a room, usually a town annex or, or wherever else they might meet, the senior center. And there's no real interaction with the public. And, you know, this might be dealing with HR matters or personal matters. I'm not sure that we'd want to have it videotaped. This might, this might not be totally relevant to the, to the discussion, but just thinking how would it, the proceedings will be open to the public, but would they be on TV? So something to think about. And then, what else for communications? If, I, I would suspect that in that section, we talk about what we did, if we interacted with somebody on another board or commission related to the subject or if like we went to the, if we attended something that was, was related to public safety. Maybe we should have looked for things that we can do that would broaden our, our horizon and sort of experience. So we have communications, like if you attend an NWA CP meeting or you attend, you being a pronoun, not you personally. Like, um, a CCM class, one of the seminars that they have. We should be actually looking for those things so that we can learn from the experts as we participate in this, in this endeavor.
Thank you, Council Heat. Council Board along?
You're looking for communications of, can I just clarify so I make sure I'm going to say the right thing under the right area?
Yeah, I, I realized I didn't recognize any counselors for like communications tonight before we got into our agenda items. So just operating that opportunity to counselors.
I appreciate that. I, I think I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So if, if all business is complete, I, well, before I, I ask for motion to adjourn, I just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight to our, our third meeting. Really enjoyed our discussion so far. You know, I, you know, they say no news is good news and I have not heard any complaints officially and unofficially from individuals about our work. Therefore, you know, I come to believe that our discussions, you know, no, I, I believe they are, they have been fruitful. And, you know, again, we're discussing important business and, you know, issues that are, you know, that are every community is confronting right now. How we ensure that our police departments, how treat civilians and, you know, our residents with, with respect and civility. And then we hold our officers to the highest ethical and moral standards. And again, you know, pops up, nothing to worry about. And, you know, this is about moving forward and progressing as a country and, you know, and erasing a stain that just has seems to have not gone away for, for centuries, you know. And so, you know, hopefully, actions and, you know, the undertaking that we have, you know, yields, yields positive results. So I'd just like to thank, again, Council Heat and Council Board along for stepping up. This is thankless work, you know. I know all of us do not have the time on a Thursday evening to, to be doing this, but we make the time. We make the time because it's important work to our, our community. So I'd just like to thank you both again and very much look forward to this discussion two weeks from now with the court committee, with our police chief. And that I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you adjourn, one question perhaps?
Yes.
Is it possible, with all due respect, I think you're doing a great job as this is very organic and ever-evolving and new. I just had one, is it possible to add a line in our agenda where we maybe entertain new working like items, agenda items, your thoughts?
Like new business?
Yeah, where we can kind of, or action items where like, okay, maybe we're going to look at Hartford's, you know, I don't know, this, or, I'm not sure what the proper way to say it, but just, you know, a way to kind of leave like where we're going next, like what other things we take away is kind of, I guess with these kind of committees, I like to leave a little bit of homework, I guess I'm asking.
Yeah.
Well, so that way, I know that you drive the agenda, which I completely respect you doing. But, yeah, we don't have to do it this round, but maybe for the next one, adding a line or, or something where we could kind of, I don't know, review a policy or something that we're going to discuss in addition, you know, to our next meeting. So we have some working items.
Absolutely. So maybe we can talk offline about how that would be structured. I'm, yeah, people to, whatever suggestions you have, again, it's an, or, you know, it's just creating the agenda as an organic process for me. You know, I, I absolutely welcome any feedback you have. This is your committee as much as it is mine.
Yeah, I think the new business line might be able to do that efficiently. So yes, I'll, I'll reach out and see what Conrad, Council Heat also, you know, what he thinks or what he would like. But a way to say, you know, obviously there could be different agenda items added, but just maybe one working item would be.
Awesome. And, and any, any suggestion from Council Heat?
No, that, that's all good by me.
And my other question is, I know our rotation has changed. So I did have something on the opposite Thursdays. So now if we start here and rotate two Thursdays from here, I think it might start to fall on, on that weekend. Yeah.
Right.
I don't mean to.
I, so that means our next meeting would be September 24th?
We have a joint meeting coming up first, don't we? Or when is that? Let's see.
Yeah, we, so we, our joint meeting is on the 23rd.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Oh, that's a Wednesday. Okay, so that won't affect my Thursday.
Yeah, so therefore we will not have a meeting. So for all intents and purposes, our next meeting after that will be a month from now. Our, like, our, for our first, like, just, no, it won't be a joint meeting. I may, probably won't be a joint meeting, but.
So right, so if it was the first of October, which I believe I heard the court is going to have their stuff hopefully done by the 30th, isn't that the deadline they had given or, or something? I heard the RTM meeting last night.
Uh, September 30th?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I did not watch the RTM, so I can't, I can't confirm or deny.
All right. I'm okay with, if the fact that we're meeting on that Wednesday, I'm okay with the next meeting being the first. But, you know, that's completely up to you guys and that way we fall back on our same rotation.
Yeah. All right, that, that's fine by me.
Is that okay with you, Councilor Heat, or?
I'm just pointing out, September 23rd, always the fourth Wednesday. As Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, I have to be at that meeting. So, yeah, so I, I won't be here for, for the public safety meeting, but I will watch it with, on the video afterwards.
Yeah, what, what time is that, Council Bumgarner, on, on the 23rd?
You bear with me, I'll pull up the agenda right now. I knew the date off the top of my head, just the time. Just quickly, if you'll bear with me. Okay. Oh. The time.
But maybe we can meet up, reach out to the court and see.
I'll speak to the court, yeah, not the time. And if the time hasn't been set, then maybe that's, you know, that, that we can be structured in a way where,
We could, yeah.
You know, can happen and maybe an hour afterwards or whatever, but we can work on those details.
Oh, wait a minute, quick question. September 23rd is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're normally meeting on Thursdays, so that's why I'm confused.
Wait, there's no Dems meeting, correct?
There is a Dems meeting on September 23rd, that's not council, but I have to go to that. Or should go to that. Okay, we'll figure that out later.
All right, we'll figure it out, yeah. All right, perfect. Well, so in the works, sorry.
Thanks very much.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and, and good night. We'll see you in two weeks.